Thank you. All right, so it's still the agenda prep here. And do we have Dr. McMorris?
Yes, please.
Dr. McMorris, is Ms. Barton here?
Yes.
Do I see her? Is she on web or outside?
Sharon?
Yeah.
No, she's not here. She's on her way.
Okay, all right, so we'll do it after we get to 57. So let's start with the consent agenda. District Attorney.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm going to start with, I'm going to start down here with Commissioner Burrell. And we'll start with one through six, all right? On the consent agenda. Any questions there?
I do have one.
Okay.
Number six.
I'm sorry, thanks. Is this covered under the 132 million from the CARES Act? Or is this separate? Yeah, Judge Bruton's court.
I saw Darcy on there. There she is. Hey, Darcy.
Hi, I'm at a difficult point with training people. What was the question again?
On number six, that funding, that's not, that's not part of the CARES Relief Act, is it? With the funding.
No, that's from the, from the state. That's just kind of emergency grant funding, which is very similar to supplemental grant funding. It's added on to my existing grant that expires on June 4.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, but it is covered under the state emergency?
Right. The fund is coming from the state, not from the CARES Act.
Okay.
It's coming from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, which is a state agency.
Okay.
Thank you, Darcy.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Cupid, do you have any questions on one through six, three to six? Commissioner Gamble?
Yes. And I'm trying, because folks were responding to me on my questions. And I'm trying to go back to my email. Number three. So we're creating another new position? This is.
This reimbursed.
Is the district attorney on, or somebody from our office?
Yes, sir. This is Kim McCoy. Good morning.
Morning.
This is a partnership between the district attorney and Live Safe Resources. It is a federal grant. It is a time limited grant. But due to the provisions of the grant and the guidelines for the position itself, which is a coordinator for the elder abuse multidisciplinary task force, the federal government recommended that this be a district attorney position rather than a nonprofit position. And so therefore, we are requesting the creation of this position. As I said, it is time limited. The grant itself is time limited. And so it would be a time limited position and basically would work as a county position reimbursable by Live Safe Resources.
So are we going to use an existing county employee to fulfill this position? Or are we going to find a new employee?
The position has been, it would be posted and interviews would be conducted in anticipation of the funding being approved. Some interviews have already taken place, but it is a new position.
Okay, and it's being clearly communicated that this is a temporary position?
Absolutely, yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you. And then item number six, and I'd like to address this to the county attorney. Bill, could you explain, because I've had a lot of questions from folks of why the Board of Commissioners is being asked to ratify decisions that were made by the county manager during the declaration of emergency? If you could just clarify that for folks, please, because I've had a lot of questions.
Well, yeah, certainly. I mean, it depends on what the particular agenda item is, but emergency expenditures are being ratified pursuant to Georgia code. Any contract let by the county pursuant to an emergency has to be ultimately described in the minutes and of the governing authority and is a requirement that it be ratified as soon as practical on the minutes of the governing authority. And it also has to set out what the nature of the emergency was. So the ratification of those agenda items is merely an effort to comply with Georgia law. And ultimately, but probably more importantly, it's really a practice in government transparency because this is the formal vehicle by which we can have contracts recorded on the minutes and into the clerk's records, so that they would be able to understand that. And also, the ratification items, some of them are longstanding board commitments at either the state or federal level. And so while the DOE would have allowed the county manager to approve those contracts, ultimately, those need to be ratified by, by the BOC, to be recorded and ultimately executed by, by the BOC to be able to maintain those.
Thank you.
Excuse me, is that number seven?
Six, six.
Six is the one we just talked about with Darcy.
Right.
Were you talking about six or seven, Kelly, with the Holland and Knight?
No, she's talking about six.
Okay.
There's several items on the agenda that start out to ratify a previous action by the county manager.
Okay.
So I had a lot of questions coming in, once the agenda was printed, of why that was stated. So that's why this was the first agenda item that had that on, and that's why I asked Bill for clarification, so that way we could let everyone know.
Okay, well, I'll just stay with you for number seven then, all right? How's that? Commissioner Gamble, sure.
Yeah, I have some questions on that.
Jackie, did you email me back? I'm still trying to look through, because this was the question I, you did. Okay, if I could look for my email that Jackie sent me.
Sure, okay. I'll come back, I'll come back to you. I'll go to Commissioner Cupid. Or do you have any questions on number seven, Commissioner Cupid?
Just a little bit more.
Sure.
Yes, if we could have a bit more clarification. It provides that the contract amount is for consultation. Can you go into a little more detail of what consultation entails for that contract?
Sure. So the agreement that we have with Holland and Knight is to provide guidance, clarification, and assistance with understanding what funds would be available through the CARES Act and beyond, because there's going to be some funding, you know, COVID-4, 5 stimulus money as well. So basically, what they're doing is a conference call weekly with us and sending emails daily on information from the federal government, from the legislature, on what's going on with COVID-19 funding. So in addition to that, whenever we have a question, either email or over the phone with them, they help provide clarification for that. If we are applying for grant funds, which we will be in the next round, they will assist staff. So for example, if it's shovel-ready projects that we've been talking about preparing for, they will look at the grant. They will help us to write some of the language in the grant. Excuse me. They will lobby our US legislators to support that grant. So that's basically the agreement that we have with them.
Okay. And you mentioned a lot, and in here, this engagement letter doesn't have those details, but that's the expectation? And is that documented anywhere?
Yes, so what we did was we went through a bidding process last year. I want to say September, October. And we never brought the agenda item forward for a federal lobbyist. So what we did was we went back to look at what the selection committee had chosen, the scope of work that was advertised in the RFP. And we said to, and they were the number one firm that was selected by the selection committee. So we went back to that language and said, COVID-related services, professional services, could we ask you to do these things?
Okay.
And as things were progressing really quickly, we just wanted to simplify it and say, for assistance with helping us to understand, to gather information that may be a little bit confusing, because as you all can imagine, there are emails constantly about what funding is out there as it relates to CARES. And so we just did a simple document to say, for COVID only, not additional services or lobbying services beyond this, could you help us? And so we agreed upon a fixed rate, not to include outside costs. I think that was one of the questions that, you know, that Commissioner Gamble had asked, are there additional fees outside of that cost? It's a flat fee. It's for six months, and we chose that number because we figured we would still be in this situation, perhaps at least for funding opportunities anyway, particularly as it relates to stimulus funds and grant writing for some of that competitive funding. And there's an out for either them or us, should we, either one of us decide to part ways with no additional costs or implications for asking out of the agreement.
Okay, so it may be helpful to get a copy of the former scope of work that may be already in the minutes of the former approved agenda item from last year. And the only limitation on that is that it's all COVID-related items?
Yes, ma'am.
With respect to that scope of work that we approved last year?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I can provide that to the board.
Thank you. And just, you know, looking at this, it just begs the question of where we could be missing out on learning of opportunities beyond COVID. But I understand at this time, this is what we're limited to, but.
Yes, and that was the reason we.
It just seems to me that we could be leaving money on the table in so many other arenas right now.
And that was the reason that we initially went out for an RFP for a federal lobbyist. Is because we know that there are funds available, or grants available that we could be applying for, that we're leaving on the table. But because we didn't bring that particular agenda item forward as a, you know, when it came forward before, we thought, all right, let's go back to the table and see now, can we at least make it around this event that's occurring right now? And then we would come back to the board if the board so chooses to bring back the request for those types of professional services at a federal level.
I would be in support of that.
Thank you.
I'm in support of this and just look forward to looking at the scope of work.
Absolutely. I will get that to you today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Still on number seven here. We actually have the 250,000 in the budget this year for this, but we never brought it forward for a federal lobbyist. So April 1 to September 30, which would be the end of the fiscal year, is the 67.5.
Yes, ma'am.
So to expand that, or after the September 30 day, we would have to provide for it in the next year's budget? If we wanted to continue with them or expand beyond COVID with them?
Yes, ma'am. We are working on budgets right now. And we will bring that line item forward and then ask you all to approve the scope of work beyond COVID as the recommended lobbyist for Cobb County.
Okay.
I'm good. Jackie answered my questions.
All right, Commissioner Burrell will come back to you for the water system. Number eight through 18.
Okay, I don't have anything for eight through 18.
Okay, Commissioner Cupid.
It's been a while. A question regarding agenda item number nine. This item is in consent. However, the item is stating that we are going to be conducting a public hearing. The public hearing, is that to occur at a future date or is it? Oh, well, I see somebody nodding. I just couldn't glean that from. This is for you, Judy. The public hearing is to occur after we approve this item for advertisement?
The public hearings will be held on June 9?
Oh, I see, and this later. Okay. Thank you, appreciate it. And let's see if I have anything else. Okay, I don't have any additional questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Gamble?
No questions.
Yeah, I'll stay with you for DOT, 19 through 475. 19 to 32.
Number 26. Erica, I don't think you've answered this one yet. Essentially, with all of our SPOS projects, we had been showing in our agenda items the amount budgeted and the amount expended to date, and that was not included in the DOT agenda items. So I have a lot of questions.
Sure.
Because again, I'm not finding this information on the website.
It's fine.
So number 26. Okay. So what was the budget amount and what has been expended to date? And I know you sent me for 63, agenda item number 63, you sent me the 2016 SPOS resurfacing status. Does that include number?
So what we did.
Twenty-six?
So resurfacing is a component, and then we have projects broken out into that component. So every, there's three resurfacing lines for every year in that component. So, you know, we, we think we know what we're going to spend yearly for each of those different projects, if it's the LMEG thoroughfares or the North or South. But we don't, you know, it's, the original resurfacing component was 64 million. So we just, we're just, you know, yearly, we look at our needs and make assumptions on what we're going to resurface. So right now, we have, utilizing where we're at, what we've gleaned from LMEG, and then also our IGAs with the other cities, we're around $80 million. That'll get us through 2021. So we've spent to date for this resurfacing. Out of that component, we're at around 64 million total. I think we have less than 5 million left for next fiscal year, not including our, what we expect to get from LMEG. But that, and that's broke down in one of those emails I sent. I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's complicated, because what we, we break it up into individual lines, so it.
So essentially, what you sent me here covers agenda item number 26 and 63?
All of the resurfacing items.
All the resurfacing items? And the LMEG and the IGA? So the LMEG amount that you gave me in this email, those are funds we've already received?
So we apply for those every year. However, it's based on the mileage we have in the county, and Georgia DOT tells us what we're eligible to apply for.
And we're not looking at that funding going away?
No.
With, with all that's going on?
We should not.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Cupid?
No, no. We're still on transportation.
No, it's okay, it's fine.
I had, I had to flip.
We were going quiet, so I thought you were grabbing. I apologize.
I was flipping pages. Number 30, Erica. I know you were looking, from your email, you were back looking, this one.
This is the road maintenance equipment?
Yes. So essentially, this is the one where we had a road maintenance contract back in 2018, and now we're wanting to use those funds to purchase the equipment. But I had thought that the remaining funds from that contract in 2018 went to pay salaries for the road crews, that because of the budget increase we had, the county then hired to do in-house. So I was like, where's this, where's this money coming from?
It was part of the 1.7 mills that I put into the budget.
But it was also discussed that in the interim, you were going to be using money from the 2008 contract that hadn't been used to pay the road contractors, to pay the salaries. So that's why I was like, why, why do we still have money hanging from a 2018 contract?
What I remember was we retained those dollars in case we needed to supplement in 2019 and weren't able to keep up with the needs out there. And I may be wrong. I don't remember utilizing those funds for the salaries. Can we? Can you answer that? I'm sorry.
Okay.
So in 2018, what we did when we did the miller rate increase, that was our transition year to go from the contracts to the employees. So the first year, we had partial years of both in there. So what we did is had to close out the existing contracts, and this is any residual savings that was left over in the 380 funds for the contract piece, because we weren't sure of the timing of how quickly we could hire those employees, get the equipment that we needed, and transition off the contracts. So the first year, we had to have both in there, and then those rolled off in 2019 and 2020. So this is any residual savings that was loaded in there from prior years to fund these contracts that were in place in the Fund 380. But you are correct, Commissioner, in 2018 was the first year we loaded personnel for road maintenance crews in the general fund. So that's why, is because the first year, you had a partial year of both in there because the timing was unknown.
So once we use this money to make this purchase, are we going to have additional funds left in this contract from 2018? Or is this 2018 contract now?
These will be closed out.
Closed?
Yes.
And then, Erica, number 31. I didn't see a response. On this one, my question is, is what long-term obligations, operating expenses, will the county have to be responsible for if, in the future, and for how many years, by receiving these grants?
So this is the CARES funds, and it's the same obligations with any of our federal dollars from FTA. However, we are using these funds for our operations, so we're not going to be making large purchases for buses or things of that nature. So there shouldn't be anything that really ties us to any type of additional.
Long-term obligations?
Long-term obligations, no ma'am. It'll be for the, we can utilize that for cleaning, PPE, operations. So we've split the funds, the majority of those funds, 15 plus million, will go towards, directly towards operations.
Okay, so if we come out, when we come out of this COVID-19 situation and we find that people still are not using the buses, which doesn't have the demand, there's not going to be any penalty or anything if we go and cut those bus lines or reduce our services that we would have to be obligated to?
I don't think so. I think what, you know, we would obviously have to do our studies, look at our routes, look at our ridership. And as we evaluate, if we see that there's a need to look at reductions in service, then we would have to follow the federal process, which would be reaching out to the public, having public meetings, and things like that. But those funds should not, should not untie us to anything long-term.
Okay.
I have a question for that same agenda item. The 18 million, will that cover the cost of operating that division for the year?
No.
No.
It'll be, it'll be a portion, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't take the, it wouldn't be the full amount.
Okay, because I know that the, what we consider a subsidy that goes towards DOT is in the upper teens.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so this is covering additional activity beyond?
No, this is to help supplement, since ridership will be down. And some, we have waived some of the fees, or fees, so it will help supplement. So we'll still have some general fund subsidy, but this will help alleviate some of the costs that we have for the system.
Can you help me understand, like, what may be some ongoing costs that we have, even though that we've cut routes? Do we cut the cost or the amount that we pay for, let's say, that third party? Do we cut it proportionately? How does, will this help fill in the gap for that?
It will.
Okay.
So, and then things that we're looking at now with the, with the reduction in routes, even though we have reduced routes, there are some routes that still have really good ridership. And next steps are to look at, the only routes we've really reduced right now have been our express route. So we're looking at the circulator, and then also some of our local routes. And potentially, there could be some reductions in the local service. But then we would also need to look at our ridership and our max loads on some of those routes and those runs to make sure that we're not going to overcrowd those buses. So we may have to look at supplementing some of those buses, some of those routes with buses. So even though you're reducing here, you may be infilling over here to make sure, like, Route 10 or the 30, you're not going to have too many passengers on those buses to meet the social distancing guidelines.
Yes, and I know you've sent correspondence before addressing how the system has been modified. But let's say a Route 10, which is typically a heavy route, and recognizing that service may have been reduced, are we providing an additional bus? are we providing an additional bus, two buses, to give people another option as opposed to all getting on one bus?
So we will.
Okay.
So that's where we're at now. We're looking at our routes and our riderships and our max loads and trying to determine which ones need to be supplemented before we do any more reductions. And I know that's something that we're probably going to reach out to the board and county manager about this week.
Okay, thank you. Because that would help facilitate social distancing, yeah.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gamble, you still have the...
Thank you.
I think she has a question on the same item.
Did you have a question about that agenda item? Oh, I'm sorry, okay, what is it?
We're also not charging the fare box rate.
No ma'am.
Some of that, we'll have to cover that because we're not charging a fee. But are these grants for the CARES Act separate from, is it just for transit?
Yes ma'am, it is.
So it's not part of the full 132 million that we're...
No, it's not.
We're after, okay.
Above and beyond.
It's separate? DOT has its own?
Just for transit, yes ma'am.
For transit, right.
You'll see, there's, we'll have an add-on item for Carl, for the airport, for 157,000 that was designated as a formula grant for the airport also.
Okay, for transit, okay.
Airport, yes ma'am.
Thanks.
Okay, and then just to tag on, and this is still agenda item number 31. So in this 18 million for the bus services, because I know on the 132 million dollar one that we have, it specifically states that we cannot use that money to replace lost revenue. So that is not included as a requirement in here? I mean, it does say we can use it for lost revenue.
We can.
Unlike the other one.
So one thing we have to do with, when we receive funds from FTA, we have to have a methodology for the request that we have for them. So we are, and as part of the grant, that is something that's written into this application, is that we have to provide a methodology of how we determined what we're requesting. But it, you know, once we request it, it's 100% eligible as long as it meets all these, their criteria.
That's all I have for transportation.
Okay, Commissioner Cupid?
Thank you. Item number 21?
Yes ma'am.
I'm just curious to know, has the county ever met its DBE goal through this program?
Yes.
Okay.
Carl? This is the DBE goal? Oh, he probably can't.
He's muted.
Yes ma'am. We...
Carl is on mute?
Oh.
Hey, Carl.
Hi, I'm sorry, it's difficult to understand. Could you repeat the question?
Yes, I asked, has the organization ever met its DBE goal through this program?
Erica, would you mind, since you're not wearing a mask, would you mind?
Sorry. Commissioner Cupid has asked if we made our DBE criteria at the airport?
I'm sorry.
The DBE goal, the disadvantaged business enterprise goal, do we meet that typically at the airport with our contracts?
DBE, yes, we need a DBE program to qualify for federal grants, correct?
Right, and have we met that?
And we meet the goal. We've been meeting the goal, correct?
Yes, we meet the goal. The contractual requirements go forward.
Yes, because it doesn't necessarily require you meet the goal. It requires you make a good faith effort to meet the goal. And I'm curious to know, has our good faith effort resulted in us meeting that goal? Okay. Number 23. If I am reading this correctly, it's providing that cleaning services are provided every day?
Throughout the county.
Throughout the county?
So not everything's probably cleaned every daily, but...
Okay, and yes, because it's saying that cleaning services are performed daily at each location, and the location is including the bus stops. And I know the bus stops are not necessarily attended to on a daily basis.
Probably, no. And I can get your rotation.
Yeah, that would be great. That's exactly what I'm looking for. Number 23. And then number 24, just a clarification. There's a, let me see if I have the right number. I don't think I have the right number for 24.
He's fine with the answer. I'll have Jackie explain.
Oh, this is for number 23. There's an 80/20 match that's required.
Yes ma'am.
And 80% comes from the FTA grant.
Yes ma'am.
And then the grant fund, is that county fund separated?
Yes ma'am. When we request our funding, we set aside what we think our local match percentage will be and go ahead and include that in our request yearly.
All right, great, thank you. That answers all my questions, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner Burl?
That's all I have.
DOT.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'll stay with you for Public Services.
Okay.
33 to 37.
33 through 37, I don't have anything.
Okay, Commissioner Cupid?
No questions.
Commissioner Gamble? 33 to 37?
33 through 37.
I'm good.
Okay, well, I'll stay with you for 38 and 39. Commissioner Cupid?
No questions.
Commissioner Burl? Okay, I'll stay with you for Public Safety, 40 through 43. 40 to 43, Commissioner Cupid?
No questions.
Commissioner Gamble? I'll stay with you for 44 and 45.
I'm getting more answers to number 45, but at this time, I cannot support it.
Okay. Commissioner Cupid?
Just a second, sorry. Thank you. Yes, this is just a tough time with all of the challenges that the business community is having with federal funding and the angst that they have had for some of the larger businesses receiving funding and things not trickling down or being opened up for small businesses comparably. And to do this in the middle of this time seems very difficult. And particularly with, this is going to have a direct general fund impact. And I know that I've had some concern about that. And I think there's been, there's typically an analysis that's done to ensure that there's going to be a return for it. But this is just a very, this is a very difficult time to support something like this.
Okay. Sure.
Actually, I had asked a couple of questions, but I'd like to, Jessica or Jason Gaines, I'm not sure which one wants to answer this. Part of, the building is already being used. Home Depot purchased this back in December. And it was at 30% capacity now, but it was full not long ago. And they're talking about taking three years to do this transition into the Home Depot headquarters. So are they planning to essentially lease out space to other businesses in the interim for the next three years?
I heard part of, I don't know if y'all can hear me, I heard part of that. So the question was, are they planning to lease the building, to lease tenant space to other businesses during the three years of the build-out? Was that the question?
Correct.
That's not my understanding. My understanding is that they're looking to, you know, basically put people in place, put their people in place as the space is being built out. I've not been informed of any plan for them to lease the space to other tenants.
Okay, Jason, I will share some information that I have with you. And then if you can get back with me once I send that email and let me know, I'd appreciate it.
Please repeat that, I couldn't hear that clearly, I'm sorry.
I'm going to send you an email. Okay.
Okay, I'll look at the email. Thank you.
Commissioner Burl, 44 and 45. Okay, I'll stay with you for Human Resources, 46 to 49.
Number 47. This is within their approved budgets?
Yes, it doesn't change any budgetary impact. It's just clarifying the assignments they already have and eliminating the list, since the board had previously said it was whoever employees were designated by the chief or the sheriff.
Okay. And then Commissioner Ott had a question and I did too about number 48. Was that answered?
My understanding, the policy was approved by the board as a recruitment and retention incentive. It wasn't initially driven by the, how the training would benefit the position.
But this is adding the education incentive play, incentive pay to the ASTRO 25 Radio Systems Administration.
Yeah, I've received a request from 911 to add those radio system specialist positions to be eligible to get this incentive pay as well.
Okay, but are there employees within the sheriff's office that would qualify for this under the radio program?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, because that was the question. So there's not any?
No, and that's why it's specifically added just for 911. But Chief Allen was notified, and I haven't heard any feedback from her.
I think she's on here. Or she was. Okay. Okay, I'm good. And then what numbers are you through?
We're still at 46 to 49.
Okay. I don't have anything on 49.
Commissioner Cupid?
Tony, if you can just help me understand or explain to me, you have your book, page 240. It says that in the sheriff's office and public safety departments assigned to designated areas, they will receive supplemental pay of 5% or 10% of market control point for that assignment.
Yes ma'am.
And then when I look here and I look at what the definition is of market control point, it looks as if this is probably a median salary or the glowing salary for that position. So this is something that's being assessed. We're assessing this every year. And then if you're saying they're getting 5% or 10% of that in supplemental pay, I can see being 5% or 10%, I guess, 5% or 10% within the market control point. But this is saying it's a supplemental pay. I'm not understanding how this is.
Yes, the, any pay adjustments to employees' pay is, has been driven off of a percentage of the market control point. And that's a part of the structure, the minimum, the maximum in the market control. Generally, for most of our pay ranges, the market control is a 0.20% into the range. And so any, that keeps the rate of adjustment standard across, for every employee, instead of it being a percentage of pay, it's a percentage of a set amount within the range for the position. And that is assessed every time we make any adjustments to the pay ranges.
Oh, okay. All righty. And then for the telework policy, on page 246. Just one criteria, states employee must be in a regular, full-time status for at least one year. But I presume that could be superseded if there's something occurring like the pandemic that we're in, that employee...
Yeah, the last bullet under the scope was added so that, and when the board met on March 17th, so that really when we go into a pandemic or an LOS period, all the other provisions really are subsided for that period of time.
All right. Those are all the questions I have, thank you, Tony.
Commissioner Gamble?
Okay, and then back to number 47, Tony. I am not comfortable with the 5% or the 10% language. Do we have a policy that determines which one will be used? Because otherwise, it's arbitrary up to the person who's determining what to give as an increase. And I know we've had complaints before of, you know, individuals not being compensated equally. So I would rather see this just say 5%, not the "or", because it gives the option to go above. And again, one person might want it, another one won't. Or do we have a policy that states how it's determined?
The policy was previously, as it is broken out now, but that language was being struck from the two lists. But the board had previously approved which assignments would get 5 and which would get 10. And so we were proposing to strike the list, but just leaving it as 5 or 10 as designated by the chief or the sheriff.
Right, and again, again, they're in different departments. So again, if it's not done consistently, I think we should just go at the 5% and not give it an "or".
Or you do 10%.
Mr. Chairman, we're going to have a budget issue.
You've got to come up here.
The reason it says 5 or 10, you take a paramedic in the fire department who works at a non-advanced life support station, we pay them 5% for their paramedic, whereas someone who is a paramedic working at an advanced life support station gets 10%. So it's, I would think that the only opportunity for us to not be consistent might be from one department to the other. And I don't know that they operate parallel to each other so that we could just say a set 5% if you will. So I just wanted to give you the explanation of why 5 in one case and 10 in another case. And I think that's the biggest driver of that verbiage in that policy.
Okay, but just as you said, you know, it's not compensated across each department the same. Yet that's what the step and pay that was just put in place was done. I mean, that was one of the reasons, is because, you know, people weren't being compensated the same. So that's where I'm going, okay, are we going to start another round of?
Specialty pay is altogether different than their base pay. In other words, if you and I are both lieutenants in the fire department and you, we under the both, both under the same pay grade, our minimum, our mid, and our max, our market control is what, minimum or mid? If you and I are getting compensated for being on the hazmat team, regardless of how long you've been here or I've been here, if we're both lieutenants, we're going to get the same compensation for being on that specialty team.
Okay, so, and actually, as you were talking, another question popped into my head. So if we've gone to the step and pay where it's a fixed salary at each step, why are we still using a midpoint to calculate the 5% or 10%? Sure, since we've gone to the step and pay, so essentially, we now have a chart that says, you know, this is what you're going to get paid at this step and level and rank. Why are we still using the market control point if we've now got a chart that specifies what the salaries will be?
Well, the step system provides for them moving up as they gain service within the position. It still has a range with a minimum, a market control point and a maximum. This is for calculation of the supplemental pay that they get. So the supplemental pay will be calculated off of the market control point, which provides a set dollar amount with a set percentage. So every employee would get the same dollar amount that's within that range instead of it being a percentage of pay. So if you were at step one, you'd get a different, if you did it off a salary, it would be a different dollar amounts depending on which... it would be a different dollar amounts depending on which steps you were at.
Okay, I guess I'm still not comfortable with having the five or the ten. And given the situation we're in, I'd only be comfortable with the five.
Tony, can you clarify the supplemental pay?
The clarification for what it is?
Yes.
It's additional pay that the employees who are given certain assignments. So those assignments that are listed down there that are, that are being taken out as far as being, maintaining a list. But if they're assigned to the bomb squad, the hazmat team, they get additional compensation for being, having those additional duties and responsibilities to be on that team.
Okay, so it's not necessarily gonna be a full salary?
No, it's just a supplement to their pay for as long as they have that assignment. So if they ever come off of that assignment, they would no longer get that pay.
Okay. And is that a typical practice with those type of roles? Because if you're looking at market control point for that supplemental pay, I presume that's a practice that's shared industry-wide, and you're looking at what that market control point is and basing that off of that.
I don't know if it's a typical practice, because I've never looked across other areas. But it has been a practice of the county for as long as I've been here that supplemental pays have been given for those assignments.
Okay, so what's the reference point for when you say market control? I presume that we're looking at the market of what that is.
Well, we have established that market control point is part of our pay plan since, since the mid-nineties that we, we establish a market control point. And that's generally a time, a, a, a point where we're looking at comparing to the market for the different positions in the county. And we've maintained a market control point and use that for pay adjustments since we've had a compensation policy in place.
Okay.
That keeps the adjustments more uniform for every employee.
Okay. And that's being, I'm sorry, and that's being done on a regular basis? Because I know we had the pay-in-class study at one point.
Yes.
Which I thought that's what the goal of that program was. And on top of that, we are assessing this market control point on a regular basis.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
If I read the agenda correctly, there's only four positions that receive the specialty pay. It's a civilian training officer, the tactical dispatch officer, recruitment and background investigator, and the post-certified training officers. Right?
There are multiple people getting those pays in those assignments. Those are assignment areas, yes.
I guess the question that Commissioner Gamble has, and it's a good one, is if they're, and I heard what Chief Kreider said, but how do you, are they assigned by line somewhere in a policy that this gets, this is a five percent, this is a ten percent position?
I really have to refer to Randy, because that's more of an internal, this is how we do the pay, but I'm not sure how they make the assignment.
I guess the point is, is that how do we know which ones are getting the five and the ten? Is that, is that a policy already, or is it a case-by-case consideration?
It was, it was actually, as it was approved by the board, as the policy was written previously. So there was no difference than what the board had spelled out. Five percent for this list of assignments and ten percent for this list of assignments.
Chairman, if I can interject though, but if you look at the revision that they've given, it's number I. They're removing all of the items that we had said this is what's going to get a five percent, so.
If you'd left that in there.
And we, we can pull this item, sir, and bring it back with it, just adding to the list, the assignments that need to be added.
Well, I think it just asked a number of questions, okay? And she's got a good point. The old policy listed the positions that got the five percent and what got the ten percent. Now we're just pulling that and we're, it seems kind of, I'm sure there's good reasons for doing what they're doing. It just doesn't seem to be as specific as the old guidance had. I think that's her point.
Yes.
So there must have been a reason why you pulled it.
Because we, we found where there were other needs for assignments, instead of having to bring back the item every time to add new assignments to the list. Since the board had already authorized that those adjustments be approved at the discretion of the chief or the sheriff, as long as they had funding, instead of avoiding having to bring an item every time to add new assignments to the list is what we were doing.
But again, this, this allows for that creep to start happening.
Exactly what I was thinking too. I think she's got a good point. Let's bring it back and run it by the commissioners again, okay?
Okay.
And we're almost there.
Yes, so, all right, thank you.
Nope, not yet. Number forty-nine. And I brought this up back in March when we had the, the discussion. But I don't support the fifty percent annual leave for all departments that's written into the emergency limited operational services. And I, I think we all know why, based on what we, we learned from that, just in the first few weeks that we did that.
This is forty-nine?
Yep, it's forty-nine. Forty-nine goes back to discuss the policies that we had discussed back in March when we went into, when we went into limited operational services. And the time and a half is still in there for all employees. I can't support that. Also, throughout the document, we're.
It was the essential personnel that reported to duty and not including key managerial that earned the fifty percent.
Right, but, but the document that we got from the county manager pretty much told us how much that cost us up until April fourth, which was not what I think anybody had expected, which is why it was then stopped. So, and again, I'm still having a hard time of seeing why the librarians were compensated for, you know, time and a half when they weren't really essential during the shutdown. I understand they were still doing work that they felt needed to get done. But to compensate them for coming in at time and a half, I don't agree with that. So therefore, I can't support this policy as written, because it will set us up again if we have to go into this type of a situation to then be compensating more than just, say, our public safety officers, which are required to go out and help folks during these times.
Sure, just to clarify too, it was accruing annual leave at half the amount, not paying them time and a half.
Well, but again, it's, it's going to cost the county. I mean, you can look at it as opportunity cost, however you want to. I mean, it's still, the county now is obligated to that amount that we were sent out to cover.
Okay.
Okay, so when we first put this into place, it was to compensate those employees who were actually coming into work at a work site at fifty percent above your, your regularly accrued annual leave. So it was just for a couple of pay periods. And when we realized that it was going to be more expensive than we had anticipated, we did stop it on April fourth. But it was only for non-key managerial and employees who actually came into a work site. So it wasn't for all employees. There were folk at the libraries, but not a lot, who were working, but they were actually coming in. But when we went into deeper LOS, and we said, okay, everyone who doesn't absolutely have to come into work, stay at home. That first couple of weeks, we were also in the process of ordering VPNs. IS didn't have enough VPNs for people to actually telework. So the first two weeks were, we had more people coming in than normal. Now we have those VPNs, and they're actually teleworking and working from home. So we can't go back and undo that, but we're not going forward with it either, Commissioner. I just wanted to clarify that.
Right, but the policy that you're asking us to approve still has that in there. So while, so if we approve this policy, what's going to prevent somebody from coming back and saying, well, then you stop this policy, we were still in a, and we have to decide if we're gonna call it an ELOS or just an LOS. That was another comment I had. You know, technically, because we're in a limited operational services until Friday, when the chairman removed it from the county. You know, are the employees gonna go back and challenge that we're not compensating them per our policy? Because it's still in here, so.
It's under the county manager's authority, though, to reactivate that or not. And I have no intentions at this time to reinstate that fifty percent above regular annual accrual. So that was under my authority.
Right, but again, I think we need to remove it from this policy. I understand if it's like a snow event or something that is just, you know, two, three days. And yes, public safety DOT and our water crews are out, you know, doing extra to help get people where they need to be. But for this type of situation, I cannot support this. Also, my other question and comment to you and Tony was, you know, again, in places, we refer to it as emergency limited operational services, and then others, we refer to it as just limited operational services. We need to be consistent, because my next question is, is well, what if we, you know, come back and determine, well, we're not in an emergency, but we want to go to a limited operations service? How does that?
It was just referenced, as we, as you recall, on March seventeenth, we changed whether to be this policy. And then the board recommended a further name change to be done afterwards. So that's how we ended up with emergency limited operational services or emergency closure. That's the policy, so we have two different statuses. So it would be going into closure or emergency closure or LOS. We referenced in the purpose line, emergency limited operational service, simply really because the title changed of the policy. But throughout the rest of it, it's referenced as LOS or closure.
And your teleworking policy, you've got it on the first page, which is page two forty-six on the document we have. You have it as an LRS. But then on the second page in bold, on the second to last paragraph, you've got it as emergency. So what I'm saying is, we just need to be consistent to how we're gonna reference this.
We'll go back, Commissioner, and look at it.
Okay.
Just for clarification on the point, we were looking at accrued annual leave at fifty percent. It provides work for the first two pay periods? Yes, it says LOS will be further compensated in a form of accrued annual leave at fifty percent of the time, work for the first two pay periods of the LOS.
Right, it was two, two pay periods that they received that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
And then we included the wording of partial or full, in full. So it was one of the pay periods we had too, was a partial pay period.
Okay, and this policy is to apply not just for this circumstance, but for those in the future?
If we had to go forward again.
Forward again, so you will limit this for two pay periods in the future? And that would keep the costs from ballooning in the way that it was being projected with this pandemic?
Commissioner Gumbel, you have a question on that one?
Yeah, but I didn't know what they were finished. The impact statement is March eighteenth through April fourth. That's the two pay periods we're talking about for this, for COVID-19. Where is it in the teleworking policy that it will be two pay periods moving forward for another emergency or disaster or whatever we deal with?
Teleworkers shouldn't be qualified for this because they're staying at home.
But I'm saying, where is it, what are you referring to in the future?
In the emergency limited operational policy, Commissioner, it lists under. Employee, it's under, under C, number four, it said employees approved to telework.
It's D, on page two fifty-one.
Yes, ma'am, page two.
And, but, but where we talked about the fifty percent was, was under.
Six D.
We said those who are actually to report to duty as normal. So teleworking wouldn't be reporting to duty as normal.
Right, and that's who's, well, teleworking it and getting the fifty percent now.
They didn't, they didn't during the two weeks either, so.
But in another situation, I mean, do we, do we have to have a set timeframe of two, two pay periods? I mean, how do we know what we're gonna be dealing with?
Well, that's, and that's, that's the issue. We gotta give the, we gotta give the county staff the flexibility. But let's say, for instance, we have a second wave of this, all right? We bring everybody back to work in the next month, and then sometime in the fall, we have a second wave. We have to send everybody home again. You know, we can't, we can't read the future. Nobody knows this virus, all right? So we gotta give the county staff the opportunity to work with the conditions as they change to unknown, unknown situations. And that's all they're doing here, is they're giving, they're giving the county manager some flexibility to deal with this, knowing full well that she's got to be very, very cost-conscious about all this. Because even though it's our intent to do all, do all the right things, you eventually run out of money, right? That's the reality. You can't, you can't be doing this forever. I don't have the luxury of the federal government printing money. We have to do the revenues that were provided by the taxpayer, and we have to work within those boundaries. So that's what she's done here, is that she's trying to take the experiences of the first six weeks, two months of this COVID pandemic, learn from those experiences, and shape a policy that reflects something that we know that we're gonna be going, spending at least the next eight months, the rest of this year, in these conditions, not knowing what the future looks like. So I think, I get, I get the point here, but, you know, we might be back again. If we, if we go and make this change now and try to find, make it finite, we might be back again in three months saying, we gotta go and modify it because the virus, once again, you know, took the initiative and took it out of our hands. We still have to run this government, and we have to do it within the revenue that we're provided. So there's a little give and take. I get all the points here. But if anybody in this board can read the future, I can't.
And with the CARES Act funding, the money that we expended for that fifty percent above, should we have to, we can recoup that from our CARES Act. It is an eligible expenditure.
Yeah, but it said it was an eligible expenditure for, like, public safety. You know, nowhere did I read in between the lines when I read the guidelines that we could, we could claim the, let's say, the library expenses back under that one hundred and thirty-two million.
Why are you picking on the library?
Because it's the library.
There is funding in there for libraries.
The libraries were not open. The public could not go to the libraries. So again, we have given, we have given this funding out. This is, to me, this is not something that we can go under the CARES Act and get reimbursement for. Public safety, fire, sheriff, property management, because I understand property management was down helping secure off. You know, some of these I can understand, but we're gonna be stretching really far. County manager even has a line item in here for cost infringement, which I don't understand, because again, I thought everything was a contracted position. And even BOC has funding that was essentially given. Why is that? But those, to me, are not gonna be reimbursable under the CARES Act because those were not deemed essential under the CARES Act guidelines that we were given.
There is, there is more funding coming down the road. I think I was, I said last night, I sent you an email coming from ACCG and GMA about additional $3.5 billion that may be provided to counties. I get your point.
You did not send me the email, just to let you know. I have not received it.
But it was last night. It was late.
I've been going through my email because staff is.
That's fine, Commissioner, and I'll send it to you. The point I'm making, though, is that this is a, this is a fluid situation. Two weeks ago, I didn't know, I didn't even know I had $132 million to take care of this. In another two weeks, I may get another $132 million. You know, there is money coming down the chute here faster than we can, can properly process it, which is why we hired Hall in the night. So I get your point, but what you're asking for today may change tomorrow because there is no concrete guidelines right now saying, this is it, the funding stream stops. We need to have options open to us that when more funding becomes available to us, we can recoup our expenses under those. Now, this is not intent to bring everybody back to work and then seek the federal government to pay their salaries. I get your point, but this is not, there are lots of things that went on this government in many different, in every single department here, where I'm not privy to it, but the government still ran.
Yes, but these expenses, we didn't know were gonna be reimbursed on April fourth when we stopped the expenses. So the bottom line is, if, if for some reason that money gets taken away, we are still on the hook. The taxpayers are still on the hook to cover this.
I, I don't disagree with you, Commissioner Gumbel.
I, I don't disagree with you, Commissioner Granbrough. But this policy is not being written with anticipation or expectation that there's going to be a federal funding source that reimburses it. Like, I don't think we're only including positions with the guarantee that the federal government is going to reimburse whatever position that we list here. So, I mean, while I understand the need for us to address the budget and any shortfall, which we definitely need to do, that's still, that's a completely separate matter from this agenda item. That wasn't contemplated when we first went into the limited operations schedule. And we don't know what's going to happen in the future, as the chairman is saying. So, I mean, I think you're making very valid points. We need to be very conscientious about money. But I don't think that we should, we should hamstring this policy based off of future dollars or federal dollars that we do not know will be coming in the future in case there's another pandemic and that we didn't even know in this instance.
Right. So that's why I would like this removed. Because, again, this will hamstring the taxpayers, again, to compensate for this with an unknown reimbursement. You know, it's one thing, again, we've now learned that we're going to have 132 million coming in to go back and say, okay, we have funding, we can retroactively, you know, give hazard pay to the employees that the CARES Act says can have the hazard pay. But to have this in here, not knowing if there's going to be a reimbursement, is putting a huge burden on the taxpayers.
But if there is, if there is a reimbursement option, then the policy will be in place, ready to execute it.
But because it's in the policy, the expectation is going to be there that you're going to do it with not knowing. So, again, take it out and then do it as a separate agenda item, saying, okay, we have funding to cover the hazard pay and do it separate. Don't put it into a policy that will then make it an expectation.
I don't agree with the word expectation. It's just there covering a multitude of contingencies as we reshape our government to address a contingency that nobody ever planned for. That's all I'm saying.
And, and I understand. And we also, this board hasn't planned for the lost revenue. So, again, where are we going to make up that lost revenue, yet we seem to be giving out more money? Well, that leaves it going back to the taxpayers.
But that was contemplated, right? With those additional funds, I mean, we have reserves that are set aside for when there are emergencies within the county. And I think as we looked at, well, let's say, we as staff assessed what was going on and what we had available, we saw that we had to put the brakes on it. But I do believe the county always, the county does have reserves in place to plan for when emergencies come up. This is, I mean, we didn't expect COVID, but we know that there was a, you know, a significant rainfall several years ago where there was flooding in parts of the county. There was fun, there were funds set aside for that. I, I just think that our budgeting takes into consideration that emergencies will occur.
But our budget hasn't taken into account the loss of revenue. I mean, if you sit here and read what they're predicting the state of Georgia lost of $4 billion in this past month, well, that translates down to Cobb County. We don't have enough in our reserves to cover that shortfall.
This policy is to address employee compensation, not lost revenue, not anything beyond it. I think that we know and can project what employees are being paid on an annual basis to ensure certain things are going to be covered. I don't think this one policy should be, should be expected to fill in the gap or address revenue shortfall. Else we would have, I think we would have to subject every expenditure in this book to see, should we pay anything right now due to revenue shortfall? And that's just the one contemplation I had, to be honest, with respect to Home Depot. I got concerned about it. Is this a time for us to be doing that right now? But, I mean, I, I wouldn't subject every expenditure in this book and say, don't run the county because you're going to be short of revenue. All this is doing is putting a policy in place to address the way that employees, or to address, not even employees, to address how the county is going to operate. And that particular bullet point is just to address employee compensation during the first two pay periods of that instance. Again, taking nothing away from your concern, I, I absolutely agree with you. We are all concerned about how things are going to continue to operate with the revenue we have in place. I, I just, I disagree with us loading this particular point to address that significant shortfall.
But it's noted that you, you know, you don't support this agenda item, all right?
I just have a question.
Sure. All right.
It's my understanding that we didn't have this, a policy in place. Not that we said we were going to do the 50% of their leave, add 50% to their leave for essential employees, and then took it away. We didn't have anything set in stone that, a policy that we could go by for the situation, emergency situation.
That is correct. So what we, what we did when we went into this emergency closure and/or limited operations was we originally thought that we're asking, you know, employees to come to work at least for the first couple of weeks, essential employees to come to the site until we were able to provide them better opportunity to work from home.
Right.
And so it took a week, we're going to have to get those VPNs so that people, we could send more people home to telework. That first two weeks was covering those employees who physically had to come into work. And we did not have, per se, a policy that would allow for that. It was different than a, a snow event or an inclement weather event. But what we did was we revised that policy to include the language to cover those employees until we were able to think through, okay, how do we go from here? The intent was always to let those employees know that you're coming in in a totally different situation, when none of us had ever been in that situation before. We didn't know the total cost, but when we did, about a week or a week and a half after, we said, okay, let's stop, take a moment and figure out where do we go from here? And so we are now more clear on the guidance from the CARES Act. And now can go back and say, all right, now that we know that some of that money is going to be reimbursed, let's step back in and look at what can we do going forward? But this policy right here is to cover those couple of weeks where we didn't have anything in place that we could have compensated those employees who were going above and beyond, non-managerial, non-key managerial, who were coming in and putting themselves at risk as well to be able to keep this government open and functioning. That was the purpose of that.
And I agree with that for this particular situation. But I also understand what Kelly's saying. I mean, we don't know what's going to happen in the future and if this would be the right thing to put in place. I mean, can we not leave it open-ended that the county manager decides with board approval after the fact?
We can always come back, but for this particular agenda, in order for those employees who were eligible for this, it needs to be approved. If we want to come back and take it out later, as I understand it, we can do that. It would only go into effect if we go another, God forbid, another incident of limited operations. But we can bring that back. But for the purpose of covering those employees for those two pay periods, this time, this has to be approved.
Okay, but then going back to the county attorneys, you know, why not just bring forth an agenda item, having us ratify the decision you made, you know, of a policy that, you know, was created by your team, but never approved by the board, because that policy was, you know, this policy was never approved by the board when, when this payment was done? And then bring forth an agenda item under that old policy to be ratified by the board? And then have this one just be the new policy effective April 5th going forward? I'll ask legal to respond to that.
There's lots of options on this. This is the one we've chosen. I understand you don't support it, but, you know, we're not, we're not making any progress here on this one. We're just staying in the same place. Let's just move on.
But if it fails, we're still not going to be making any progress. It, it remains open.
Commissioner, I know, I know, I've noted that you are not going to support this, all right? And I'm not hearing that from the other commissioners, so.
But I'm hearing Commissioner Burrow also has a question about it.
She does, but I'm not hearing that we don't support the, the agenda item as written. That's what I'm saying. If we want, we can pull it out, put it on regular and have a full discussion tomorrow. I'm fine with that. If that's what you want to do. Okay? Want to do that?
I think we were, I, I think, I think we could, but I think if we can get to a point of agreement prior to having to hash this out at a, at a regular meeting.
I'm just saying.
And I think, I just think from hearing the discussion, maybe there is a middle ground. Even as Jackie's clarifying her point, I'm thinking that even text could be added in here to say that this particular clause applies from this period and then moving forward, it would be contemplated by the county manager. I just think that additional sentence could address everybody's point.
That's what I was referring to.
Yeah, it could allow us all to move.
So we're going to pull it, we're going to put it on regular.
No, we can settle it right here if we...
We can add a sentence that marries these two points together and still addresses Commissioner Burrow, Commissioner Granbrough's concern. I think one sentence can do it easily.
All right. So what would the sentence say?
Well, this was only applicable until April 4th of 2020.
And future situations, emergency situations would be determined by the county manager with approval by the board.
Just that particular section, D of number six, where it addresses the 50%, right? Got it. Okay. Thank you.
You're trying to facilitate past...
Maybe legal can, maybe legal can help you with what I just said.
Well, I mean, really, the policy needs to be set by the board. And the reason that this wasn't set by the board before, because it came so fast. And so, I mean, if you're really leaving it open to the, to the county, to second guess the county manager, you're putting her in a bad position. I mean, it really needs to be set by the board on how you're going to practice this in the future. So, I mean, you could change the language to it would only be for one pay period, or you can leave it as two pay periods. But to just to leave her out here by herself, like we've been the last four or five weeks, and then say, okay, whatever you do, we might approve that or we might not approve that in the future, is going to put her in a bad position.
Well, I thought in the emergency situation, she had the authority to have made the policy anyway. Then it comes back to us for approval after the fact.
She has authority to, if she needs to, to move into LOS. But we've always had what the pay would be during a closure period of time. That's always been, and that, that was the language that we used to incorporate in the COVID policy. All we did was recognize that it can't go on forever. We're used to snow events that might last one day or two days, something like that. But, so they've capped it at two weeks. There seems to be some, some concern if we go back in this two weeks again and then six months from now, again, might be too much. But I'd really encourage the board to provide specificity in the policy and not leave it back to the board, I mean, not leave it to the county manager to guess what the action should be for it later to be ratified or not to be approved.
Thank you, Bill.
So what's the specificity going to be? Two weeks, two pay periods?
What he's saying is that's up to you.
Well, shouldn't we determine that?
You want to say maximum?
So, why not just use, why not use the past, past experience? You know, the two weeks that we did in April, all right, two pay periods. So up to, but not, not to exceed two pay periods, okay?
But if this happens quarterly, let's just say, let's, because we don't know what's going to happen, that's going to be $24 million on the taxpayer's shoulders.
Just because it's there doesn't mean we have to do it.
And therefore, the policy needs to reflect that. So if you sit here and write into the policy that it's going to be one or two pay periods, you're putting forth in the policy that that's what the board will honor.
Okay, so maybe for up to, instead of saying for the two, for up to two pay periods, is that?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't put any promise in there. I wouldn't put any promise in there.
So what happens if we have a second wave and we have to go back to this again? Then what are we going to do?
Well, and then we know, because the 132 million that we got, we have to use until December 31st of 2020. So then we can go back into the CARES Act because we know we've got that money to pay hazard pay to our frontline responders that have to deal with this emergency. So you know you've got those funds there. But that is a separate line item outside of the budget, which is what the guidelines say that that 132 million would cover. So in this case, the policy, I say we don't put that in there, but because we have, you know, we don't put it in the policy that we're going to pay you. We know we've got this 132 million, so let's say this happens again in October, November, whenever they're predicting it's going to happen again. We will know, without it being in the policy, that Jackie will have the funding to pay our first responders a hazard pay amount.
What about everybody else that comes to work here, though?
It's essential, not just...
How about water department? How about property management? There are a lot of people that are not coming by.
But again, if that's not clearly defined by the CARES, then we can't reimburse ourselves for it.
But they still have to come to work.
Okay, but again, then you're going to have to pay them.
Yes.
With taxpayer dollars.
Yes, that's right.
The taxpayer still expects to have water that's working. The taxpayer still expects the county to respond if other emergency concerns. They expect a lot of things that are not necessarily related to emergency responders.
Code enforcement. I can think of 10 things off the top of my head.
My neighbors are calling me right and left about code enforcement.
I get your point, but, you know, the government still has to operate. And in an emergency situation, and I, and, you know, again, I get your point about the money, but the, the public expects the county to still provide services during this time. And we have to pay it. But there's lots of options.
Right. And the county employees are all beneficial to continue to get a paycheck when a lot of people, we've got, you know, what, 26 million people in the state of Georgia that are unemployed? I think in Cobb County, it's 26,000 unemployed. They didn't get the benefit of continuing to have a paycheck. So to sit here and say, well, we were going to give extra.
This is leave, annual leave, 50% annual leave. It's not their pay.
It's still a liability on the books.
It is. It is.
It is.
The bottom line is, I get your point, all right? And we have to find a way to work through this. And there's lots of ways we can do that, all right? And I don't want to talk about those options right now, because once you do that, it gets out there. That seems to be our policy. The point is that the public expects us to provide services. There are a lot of people that are not going to be compensated using the CARES legislation. We have to find a way to pay for them. And we have contingencies to do that for now. So I just think that if we leave the policy in there and we put a specific, a specific limit on there, it gives the county manager the guidance she needs. And if she needs to go over that, she's going to have to come back to the board. And since the board's going to be meeting now twice a month, we'll be able to do that on a more, on a more flexible basis than we did over the last month. We didn't meet at all. So we've got to get this government back in action. But in order to do that, all right, we have to provide, we have to provide a way that we can bring people back to work, but also understand that if we have another situation, we've got to send everybody home. Then we have a policy in place and we have to pay them, and we have to find the money to do that.
Chief Cox.
Okay. So I think, I think we spent enough time on this issue, seriously. You had your guidance, two pay periods, that's a specific limit. We'll vote on it tomorrow or have further discussion about it.
Can we, can we say up to or minimum one week or whatever?
Up to two pay periods. Up to two pay periods.
Okay. That would satisfy me.
And that's based on the experience we had in April.
This is not anything to do with this policy, but as the liaison for public safety, I'm ordering Chief Cox to pull over. He's laughing. Pull over, Keith.
Okay, so, is that, are there any more questions on human resources from the board? All right, I'll go with you, Commissioner Burrow. I'm trying to allot it 50.
This is for one year?
Yes.
Okay, well, would this become, I know this is a consulting firm that we're contracting with to do this work, but would this be...
Continuing?
A permanent position with internally?
No, no, it's just a contract.
Just contract.
And what we'll do is evaluate the return on investments and do some other analysis and present that to the audit committee. And then if so, choose whether we come back to ask for another opportunity.
Okay, but the year, it starts a year April 1?
Yes.
So it'll be into the next fiscal year?
Right. Any funds that we don't use because of the pandemic will... Any funds that we don't use because of the pandemic will come back and ask the board to reserve that, but it won't exceed the $100,000.
Okay.
That this contract includes.
I'm just trying to see if you need to make it up more permanent for the budget, for the 2021 budget.
But for, for these monies, remember, it was approved with the FY20 contingency dollars.
Correct, but for one year.
Right.
So to make it more permanent, you need to think about that.
We would have to come back to the board, yes, ma'am, and ask for additional funding.
Okay. Yeah, I support it.
Commissioner Cupid?
No question.
Commissioner Burl, I'm sorry, Commissioner Graham?
No question.
Okay, I'll stay with you for 51, 52, 53, 54, and 55.
I'm good until we get to VOC regular.
Okay, Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, just number 55. I thought I saw Kimberly Roberts on the screen, but trying to understand just the discrepancy in the allocation for the first bullet for CDBG of 1.143. When I look at the corresponding tables, I'm not seeing that amount reflected in the allocation. However, for Home and ESG, I'm seeing their allocations reflected in the table, and I don't know where about $100,000 went, if that's still additional money that could go to organizations. I don't know if Kimberly's still here with us. If not, oh, she's.
Here she is.
Okay. And let me take my mask off. Can you hear me, Kimberly?
I, I guess, fine. Commerce. Yes.
Kimberly, can you hear me? If not, I'll just, I'll just email her my question.
Okay.
This is.
Okay.
There's a little situation happening. I can't hear you.
Is she speaking and I can't hear?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, that's the issue I have.
What is it?
I don't know. I think she's talking in her office. Commissioner Burl?
I don't have it, say, 357.
Six, you said.
Okay, all right. So 50, we'll start with 57. All right, here's the background for that. This is a fast-moving issue here. When I first brought this out, it was simply to start a conversation with the board to see if we wanted to consider providing additional resources to a growing need by the, by the county to feed, to feed people. And subsequent to my putting this into the, into the agenda item, the CARES, Holland and I advise us that we are, that we are allowed to use care funding for expenses for food delivery, homeless, and I'm not sure about other things like shelter in place. So the bottom line is, is that the CARES Act is now taking the orders off the board from using general fund dollars if we agree to do this, and we can use federal dollars to do that. I've asked, in order to be sensitive to the board's time, I've asked one member from the nonprofit community to come and present the, some context for this agenda item. And I spoke with Sheri Martin, and since she's working in collaboration with a significant number of other nonprofits here in the county, she's agreed to be the tethered goat for this presentation. So I asked her to come. I could have asked Irene Barton, I could have asked anybody to come do it. I just picked Sheri because she's one of many people that have, stand in the community to do nonprofits. I asked her to put together a presentation in conjunction with other nonprofits in the county, present the board a picture of what the needs are for food in the county. And then subsequently, talking to Commissioner Burl, she said she would also like to add perhaps some shelters, some funds for shelter. So again, I'm just going to say.
That's not what I said.
This whole agenda item is simply to start a discussion, all right? Simply to start a discussion. Is it something the board wants to do or not? And, and that's what this whole thing is about, so that we can see if we want to have a role in a growing awareness that this COVID virus is going to be with us for a long time, and as a consequence, is putting a burden on a lot of the programs that have been funded by, by the private sector, and does the county want to help out with regard to that? So with that, I'm going to let Sheri give her presentation first, and then I'll start the conversation with regard to the agenda item, okay? So Sheri, thanks for coming this morning.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen in the office. First, my apologies for being late. I had a, let's just say, my, my head was operating differently than my calendar on when I was supposed to be here. So as many of you know, we have been working with many organizations throughout the county, holding, they started as daily calls, they're now down to two times a week, basically making sure that Cobb Community Foundation, United Way, Cobb Collaborative, Senior Services, Cobb Douglas Public Health, those organizations that are working with food deliverers, those organizations that are working with the homeless, that we were all talking together about who was doing what and what was needed and what the need was that we saw in the community. As you will recall, we had done a study last year where we looked at the state of affairs of the county at that point in time, and just as a baseline, if we could go ahead and move to the next slide. Great. On the left side of this page is the, the wonderful numbers for Cobb County. On the right side of this page is taking it down a little more granularly. And while last year, the numbers we were looking at suggested that 71% of the households in Cobb were not spending more than 30% of their household income on, on housing, there were some organ, or, excuse me, some communities that were spending as much as 60%. I won't go through all of these numbers, but the bottom line was, even though we were looking at a very, very positive situation in Cobb overall, there are still some areas that are in extreme need. Some areas, even though unemployment at the time was 3%, there were still some areas with unemployment as high as 15%. 19% of some households in Cobb did not have cars. So let's just move on to the next slide. This, to me, is about as telling as it gets, and this is what we've all been seeing on the news. If we look at the number of unemployment claims that had been filed, and this presentation was prepared when information was only available through April 11th, we were looking at total unemployment claims being processed in the state of Georgia at around 911,000. The normal number at that point in time is around 30,000, 30, a 30 multiple of the norm in terms of unemployment. If we can go to the next slide? And if we just interpolated that out, and I will be the first to say, this is just pure math and interpolation. If we were just to move those numbers forward, what we would be looking at in Cobb County is our share, our proportionate share of that 911,000 would be about 78,000 in terms of unemployed workers. That's a tremendous number. Let's go ahead. If we look at the country overall, one of the things that we know, and Brookings Institute has prepared these numbers, is that some of the most at-risk, vulnerable workers, and vulnerable in this case is simply referring to those who are most likely to lose their jobs because of COVID-19. Our community, Metro Atlanta, is number seven in the entire country in terms of the most vulnerable workers, the ones most likely to lose their job. If you look at the column on the right, that is identifying what are those jobs that are most at risk. The number one is food industry. So let me just take that and bring it home. And on this slide, you're looking at the actual monetary impact. When you look at the vulnerable workers, you're looking at typically a household income of 32,000. That is the average household income of the workers who are most likely to lose their jobs as a result of COVID-19. I know that there is tremendous amount of support in terms of government support for these individuals through the CARES Act. We have extended and expanded unemployment benefits. I can tell you, my son is one of those vulnerable workers. It took him weeks to get through to the unemployment office, and that is the case of many, many people. So yes, the benefits are there, but they aren't necessarily immediately available in doing the work that they are intended to do. The PPP funds, as many of you know, that only helps to cover the expenses associated with the workers, and so it does help the individual workers once those funds are in place and their employees have the dollars to bring them back and to have them working again and earning. Let's go ahead and move forward. And this is what I was referring to when I said, let's bring it home. This is looking at Cobb County and the most common jobs held by residents in Cobb County. Those are the top five jobs held by residents in Cobb County. We have at least 25,000 of our employees in Cobb County working in the food preparation and serving business. And those workers, we know, are earning about $16,000 a year. And let me mention that that is actually under the poverty threshold for a family of two in this particular year. So when we think about who is being impacted most financially by COVID-19, the numbers would suggest it's the individuals who already were at the lower end of the income scale, individuals who some would refer to as the working poor, those individuals who were out earning their paychecks, but also still not earning enough to get by, and in many situations, were already living on the edge. And as a result of that, what we have seen is that the demand for food has actually almost quadrupled. It's three and a half times what it was prior to the COVID-19 impact than it is right now. So here are just some pictures from some of the sites that are providing food. The top two, I recognize, I was out, as was Chairman Boyce and Judy, at an organization called Reflections of Trinity this weekend. And the cars that we saw, I will tell you, these pictures were put together before then at another Saturday. And I've seen these pictures, and I talk to people every single day about what they're seeing. So I thought I knew what to expect. When I got out of my car and saw the number of cars there, and the kids in the car, and the families in the car, and the dogs in the cars, it was honestly very difficult to keep it together. Let's go ahead. The next slide is of some of the folks who are helping. There are over 50 sites throughout Cobb County where food is being provided on any given day, and this is what you see. The National Guard is actually Reflections of Trinity, because they have, they had last Saturday over 600, we believe, this Saturday over 800 people, and so the National Guard was there just to ensure that things ran smoothly, and they like clockwork. But this response is absolutely overwhelming and incredible, and shows the heart of this county. So here are some of the numbers. We sent out a survey to the nonprofits, the organizations in Cobb County that are providing food, and we asked them to quantify what they did before and what they are doing now. We also talked to the Atlanta Community Food Bank and asked for similar numbers from them, and everything coincided perfectly. The bottom line is that normally, about 6,500 families in Cobb are provided with food in some form or another. During the month of March, that jumped to 16,000, and if they looked just at the last two weeks of March, they were looking at 11,000. So if we projected that ahead, and I'm doing my best to see the numbers, if we projected that ahead, I believe we're looking at about 23,000 families being provided with food on a monthly basis during this crisis. Again, just projecting what we saw the last two weeks of March. If we look at what that means in terms of the number, the amount of food provided, that is actually provided in boxes, and we tried to bring this all down to create a common denominator, these boxes range anywhere from 35 pounds to 60 pounds each. It depends on the provider and exactly what got put into the box, obviously. On average, that is 46,000 pounds of food over a four-week period. That equates to 922 tons of food. It is truly, truly unimaginable. But what I truly believe is it's also undeniable that this is the amount of food that is going out the door and is needed in our community. So here we just look at the numbers from a different perspective. Again, an average of 6,500 families needing food to three and a half times that number, and the amount of food that is needed being about three times the norm. Other way, that's okay. If we look at where the food comes from, the largest single source of food for food providers in Cobb County is the Atlanta Community Food Bank, and they provide just over the majority of the food available. The Atlanta Community Food Bank, right now, has limits on the amount of food that each provider can receive, because the need is so great that if everyone just came in and ordered what they thought they would use, the food bank would be empty. So there are limits on those numbers. They also receive funds from, or, excuse me, food from local grocery stores, or at least they used to. That has completely dried up. As of last week, that was still the case. We thought that might turn, but it was still the case as of last week. And the Georgia Food Bank Association tells us that all of the food that is supposed to be coming through the Families First program, and I would say they are now saying there's a similar timeline for the food that is supposed to be coming from the farmers through some of the recent aid that came through the Department of Agriculture. At least what came through for Families First, they're not expecting to hit the docks until August. The funding coming through the Department of Agriculture for the farmers, they're not expecting that food to be here for at least four to six weeks. So we still have a window of time before there are any benefits to our community from those particular sources. So in terms of trying to quantify the need, this is, I would say, virtually impossible because we don't know how long this is going to go on. So we tried, and I tried to do it for just a three-month period of time, and I tried to take a best-case scenario of the minimum amount that would be needed. And I looked at the number of pounds that we were expecting over a three-month period, projecting forward, and crossed the fingers that at 16 cents a pound, which is what Atlanta Community Food Bank charges, that we would be able to obtain that amount of food. Now, some of that, I would venture to say, would not be able to come from the Atlanta Community Food Bank, but would have to be purchased through providers such as Cisco or others. If you add in the cost of boxes, and I'm just looking at those marginal costs that are associated with food being provided, and those marginal costs are actually the purchase of food, it's the purchase of what you have to put the food in, it doesn't come free, the boxes, the, any trucks that have to be rented, because the volume is much larger than some of their vehicles can now handle. We've also seen a need for even smaller vehicles, because many of the organizations are taking on deliveries to senior centers where seniors come drive-through. They're also taking on deliveries to towers where many seniors live. And they don't want to take the big box truck, because the amount of money that it takes to use a big box truck is more than it would cost to rent a small, excuse me, a small cargo van. And so when we look at all of these costs together that are associated with the delivery of this food, in my mind, a very best-case scenario is $1 million. But I don't think that really is coming close to cover, to covering at least the social services need in Cobb County, but it's a place to start. I want to tell you about some of the things that we're seeing in the community that we've never seen before. At least the camaraderie, the partnerships that are forging between these organizations are incredible. So we have identified some areas in very, what I call very South Cobb, the bottom triangle of Cobb County, south of 78 and even south of I-20. of Cobb County, south of 78 and even south of I-20. There are some communities in there that are in extreme, extreme need and poverty. There are not any organizations providing food to those individuals any less than five miles away. Many of these families have many children and don't have a car. So what we have done is started to ask the different organizations in Cobb, can you take this group on? And so what we're seeing is the creation of mobile food pantries. It's not something that we've seen a lot of in Cobb. Historically, it's been you go to this church, or you go to this school, or you go here or there, but not necessarily, "We're coming to you." Well, there is very clearly a need for us to go to them. And we've now seen three new mobile food pantries opened up, providing food that wasn't provided before to groups of individuals who didn't have it available to them before. And what you're seeing is this group is stepping up and saying, "I'll take this week, you take this week, and you take next week." We had a situation where an organization that provides food to college students, and not a specific college, but just generically to college students, and he called and said, "My food provider was a for-profit organization that is not, not open now. I've got 75 kids who come here once a week and get a box of food. Can you help us?" I called Howard Kepke, whom many of you probably know. He is with an organization called Noonday, who has been helping to organize and coordinate some of the response from our food providers. Within two hours, we had a commitment to provide 75 boxes of food there weekly. And again, it's rotating between which organization. One organization happened to have some extra food boxes from one of their locations. They took them to senior services. We're working with senior services of Cobb County now to make sure that those individuals who are calling and need service, but haven't been able to go through the senior service process for qualifying for the formal set of benefits, we're making sure that those individuals are receiving food. It's been, it's been amazing. The other thing that we're seeing happen, we're seeing happening is that all of these organizations are very happy to make sure that they are using the delivery of food boxes as a way to communicate information about resources that are available. We had 35,000 Cobb Community Connection cards, where people can go to online and identify what are the services that we need. We had 10,000 printed in Spanish. Those were put in these food boxes. United Way 211 cards are being packed in food boxes. Whether they're being packed at this organization, or this organization, or here, or here, or here, they're all putting that information in these boxes to make sure that the people who are in need of food know where to find other resources as well. We're seeing organizations like Cobb EMC stepped in, and they said, "Hey, we know you need cargo vans. We're going to provide cargo vans and drivers for a period of time." You've all heard about the Cobb Chamber Operation Meal Plan Program. We're seeing food drives everywhere. And one of the things that we all talk about is the heroes that we're seeing. I will tell you a group of heroes that I am overwhelmed by is volunteers. The volunteers who have just decided they're going to take their time, many of them over 65 years old, and who are considered to be in the risk category, and they're saying it's still important that we make sure that folks are getting this food. They're wearing masks, they're wearing gloves, they're following the protocols, but they're making sure that people are getting fed. So when you look at the sources where these organizations can receive funding, many of them have their own fundraisers. Those were canceled. In many cases, those were the only sources of general operations funds, but those were canceled. Some of them received dollars through their own revenue generating programs. Those can't operate right now. Private donors, funds are coming in, including from the Cobb Community Foundation, Community Foundation for Greater Atlanta, United Way, many, many, many private donors and foundations and charitable grant makers. And I won't go through all of these, but there are federal sources for funding, particularly under the CARES Act. Now, I'm not talking about the funding that is available to the county potentially to allocate, but just in looking at what is currently available with the Federal CARES Act, and looking at the specific programs that were available, the first two would not work for, for a drive-by, an essence food pantry, because you have to collect detailed data about the families. What is their income, for example? And it would be impossible to actually run through 600 to 800 cars and collect that level of data, not to mention that is not consistent with the philosophy of many of those who are providing food. When you look at the various options that are available, the FEMA Emergency Food and Shelter Program is really the only one that potentially could fit. The challenge there, and again, this is not looking at the dollars that are available to the county through the CARES Act, but the challenge with that is not only does the county not know what is allocated that people can apply for to you, the application isn't available, none of the dates are known. So right now, let's, oh, I'm sorry, let's keep on that one. So the other challenge that there is with federal grant requirements is that, and this is the biggest one of all, in order for an organization to receive funding directly through FEMA or one of these other types of grants that I've listed here, again, my understanding is this doesn't apply to the grants that are coming to the county, is that the organization must either have a full audit, or if the income of the organization is under $25,000, have audited financial statements. The cost of an audit is generally 12,000 to 13,000 for a small organization, a small organization. Many of these organizations do not have audits. That does not mean that there is anything wrong with the business that they are doing. They have very qualified oversight from very professional boards, but many of them do not either have the funds or choose to use the funds that could be used, for example, to purchase food, to pay for an audit. The process of qualifying for a government grant, as you all know, is extremely onerous, and many of these smaller organizations do not have the wherewithal to be able to do so. I'm going to skip this one, and let's go on. So here we are. The organizations that are providing food are organizations that had in their budget to buy a certain amount of food based on their experience. They're organizations that expected to have a certain amount of funding based on their experience, based on their fundraisers, based on their programs that they could receive fees from. They did not expect the amount of food that they needed to provide to be four times that in their revenue sources, and some of their food providers to essentially dry up. So this request, this request, and I thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to present, but this request is coming from those that I represent. We are asking that the county consider an allocation of $1 million, in fact, a minimum of $1 million, not to fund any operating expenses of any of these organizations, but strictly to fund the purchase of food, the direct expenses, the direct marginal expenses, I should say, related to food procurement, storage, and distribution. That is the formal request. And here's where I would just bring it all around. We know that there was already a need. Wasn't this great, but there was a need. The people who are being impacted the most by this are what we would call the working poor. The need, when you look at the numbers, and you don't even, don't even look at my numbers, just listen to the news and the number of unemployment claims filed, the need is unimaginable, but it's really undeniable. We've got an infrastructure in place that can meet that need, but the resources of those organizations that create that infrastructure are depleted. They are running out of food. The alternative resources are exhausted. And then my final question is, if these organizations don't provide food, who is going to? And I don't know the answer to that. So I am happy to take any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much, Sheri. Appreciate your time and your presentation. Okay, so I'm going to just go down the board here and get the sense of the board, and also give some comments related to the information sheet that Dr. Morris provided us last week about funding that has been available to us to provide, in this specific case, funding for food delivery. So Commissioner Burrell.
Yes. Thank you, Sheri, for that presentation. I've been hearing a lot of comments on this from the community task force that I've been working with. And I've sent a lot of cases to them, to the nonprofits as well, for people in need. But we're seeing a big, a huge request, too, for shelters. And the nonprofits that normally provide shelter, like MUS, CFR, Livesafe, they can't compromise the clients that they have in their shelters now with someone new coming in with this, that could, could be infected. And I get that, and you don't want that, of course. So they're providing vouchers to put some of these folks up in hotels. So my request would be to allow this money, if it's approved, to be used for shelter vouchers, hotel vouchers for shelter, for the requests that they get out of this million dollars, if it's approved, that they would be, be able to use it for shelter, not just food. Not increase the million-dollar amount, but just that they would be, you know, the extension, Livesafe, CFR, MUS, and whatever other ones that are providing shelter, that they'd be able to use this money for that, as well as not just limit it to food, in other words, if, if they have, you know, the need.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond? Oh, I apologize.
Okay. That would be my suggestion for this, but also that it be reimbursed through the CARES Act, since it does qualify, and we know, you know, we've already gotten the money, that it come out of that and not our general fund or reserves. And that would be, and then the accounting, the reporting. I know Kimberly, CDBG or WFN is going to be coordinating all this, but what, what kind of accounting will they be accountability, will they be using for what's being dispersed and with receipts, or how are they going to determine who's eligible and who gets what?
That would be based on an MOU that the county attorney would write, all right? That was, lay down specific requirements for what the contract would execute, and that contract would have those details in it.
So do we have that MOU ready right now, before we vote on this agenda item?
Before, but I can't, we can't write the MOU to understand what the board wants to do.
Commissioner Burrell, if you go back into your agenda item number 54 and also 55, is where we're approving for distribution of funds from WFN, Kimberly Roberts. And essentially, we had an increase. And if you look at the details, a lot of it is for sheltering in place, food emergency, community assistance, Zion Baptist is in there, Communities and Schools, Zion Keepers is in there, Family Promises, there's a bunch of MUS ministries. And then in 55, it goes on and talks about independent work program, housing, vehicles, and such that money is being allocated to. So that will happen as soon as the board approves it. So more money is coming forward to those organizations after we approve this.
But those items are their normal monthly things that we approve. That's not part of the CARES Act, where it has probably tripled, or at least doubled. I don't know.
But additional funding was granted as well.
For CDBG. This isn't part of the CARES Act or COVID, correct?
Correct.
Correct, but they also got additional funding than what they had originally been promised. So I think that needs to be noted.
Correct. Okay.
Well, they also received a grant, CDBG received a grant from the CARES Act as well, but separate from the County CARES Act money.
Correct.
And I was on that phone call when they invited all the nonprofits to call in, and it was very interesting, because Kimberly did a very good job of detailing out what needed to be done for qualification for the money. But what was more interesting was the number of calls that were dropping off as she was going through the requirements, because people aren't documenting, they're, they don't know who they're giving the foods to, which is a requirement in order to qualify for the funding under the CARES Act. So Sheri, what I understood you say, you know, of those 600 or 800 cars that you saw through, you're not documenting that. So if the CARES guidelines are going to be applicable, and they're not documenting those 600 or 800 cars that are coming through, they're not eligible for the funding.
May I respond? The funding, I believe, Commissioner Campbell, that you're referring to through the CDBG that Kim reviewed in her call, is funding that is not conducive to what we call a drive-through food pantry. It's not conducive to a food pantry. What it's very conducive to is a Zion Keepers, or a MUS ministries, or a extension, as an example, Livesafe, where they do have people who are residing there, and part of their, the services they are offering is the counseling and the case management, where that information is absolutely gathered. For the food pantries, the information that is collected is typically the number of people who are in the household, and, and that's it. There is not a requirement to provide formal documentation, but they do ask the number of people in the household, so they don't have many people they're feeding.
So I guess that would be a question for you, Jackie, because you were on the call with H and K. What kind of documentation is required in order to provide funding for them to then use these funds, in this instance, for food?
So, under this particular instance, I think that the intent of the CARES Act is to help as many people as possible. They are not asking for a lot of the documentation under normal circumstances. They are wanting to provide funding, in your case, for food for as many people as needed, for the most part. So there is no stipulation, and I have the guidelines here for, for that funding. It says what it is used for, the amount of money that, that is eligible per category, but it does not say you have to document this, 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 or that.
That would all be part of the MOU, that be between, here's the understanding. We would contract WFN to go out and identify programs that meet the criteria that's in the MOU, all right? So I think, I think what I'm hearing, perhaps informally, is that you're very concerned about, we're not just giving money away, we're providing it to organizations that, in fact, are delivering food, and we can account for that money. Is that, is that one, is that a reasonable assumption?
That is a reasonable assumption. And like, if you go to MUS Ministries website, you know, they are advertising on their website that they are providing meals to Cobb County School District. that they are providing meals to Cobb County School District children. Well, yes, they are partnership with the Cobb County School System, but the Cobb County School System has been getting that food based on the kids that met the criteria for free or reduced lunches, breakfast and meals. So must ministry isn't having to go out and get that food, or purchase it, or look for donations to it, because it's coming from the school. So they have partnered with the schools to distribute that food. Where I'm having a little bit of a problem is, is we know there's about 113,000 kids in our school system. I know we've seen different statistics of how many qualify, and I think for my district, it was like 60% of the kids. Okay, well, that's 60,000 kids that are getting, you know, breakfast and lunch every week. But then I'm also hearing that the schools aren't giving away all the food, because the kids aren't showing up. Now, if that's gonna change with, you know, putting in the mobile food bank or not, I'm not sure. And then I know, I was told that when we went up to one of my northern areas, only three people showed up. So again, it goes based on need, because as Sheri said, it's kind of that lower quadrant, Commissioner Cupid, your district, where there seems to be more of a need. So do we need to work at that? But then if you go to Sweetwater Mission, which I believe is another group that you work with, Sheri, correct? On their website, they say they're not accepting food donations. So I'm sitting here going, okay, we're hearing there's a need, yet you go to these websites, they're saying they don't need food donations, they're claiming they're giving food, but we know that that food's coming from another source. So where is this, where is this need for the food? I know, you know, two of the organizations that we personally support through our donations have given over 65,000 meals just to families within Marietta, and then another 25,000 out in the West Cobb area. So again, where is the need? And without documenting it, how do we know that people aren't going to various sources and essentially hoarding those resources that are needed truly in other areas?
Commissioner Cupid.
Yes. I just wanna address, there's a great, there's a great complexity to this continuum of organizations getting food and distributing food. And I just wanted to pipe up quickly for Sweetwater Mission, because when you mentioned them, I just spoke to one of their leaders. During this crisis, they don't even have the same manpower that they had to process people making donations. So just because they're not accepting food doesn't mean that they don't need it, but manpower is something that's becoming more difficult. Some of their population are older, they're vulnerable, and a lot of their volunteers are also experiencing hardship. So I just really, I wanna make sure we're not painting, we're not making assumptions about things without really knowing what's going on with, with those organizations specifically. For me, generally, I'm definitely in support of this item. I know the need is out there, and even when we contemplated this pre-COVID-19, I have been in support of us helping those who are vulnerable in our community. My concern is for process, similar to what I'm hearing echo up here, process, equity and accountability, is what's been shared. So I'm hearing some things about WFN, Kimberly's organization, or Kimberly specifically, that I did not see documented in this agenda item. And to me, process is extremely important, because that helps us address the issues of equity that have been ongoing concerns with our dollars, about how you make sure the money goes to those areas of need and those organizations that touch those areas of need. Also recognizing that there's are still larger organizations that have greater bandwidth that may not be there who could partner. And if we can find a way to address that, then I'm for it. And another thing also has to deal with accountability measures to address part of the concerns that I'm hearing shared by the board. Are there ways that they can measure certain, measure their activity so that we are giving a commensurate amount of resources due to the, due to, or that corresponds to the amount of work that they're doing? So concern of mine, and I also share your interest in addressing housing. Housing is a big need, but if $1 million is being identified just for food, then I'm presuming that the bucket to address housing will have to be substantially larger than 1 million, just even if you look at how much a meal costs. You know, how much would it be to feed you for a day versus house you for a day? Feed you for a month versus house you for a month? And I think that that's also a crisis that we have, of people being able to stay in their homes and, and be able to shelter in place. You did an outstanding job of showing the need for food. I'm sure that the stakeholders that helped get all of that information for food, I'm sure could provide something with respect to housing. I don't wanna make any presumptions that I know how to even begin to address the need there. But I'm in support of, of that right now, if we can just get process down and address equity and, as was shared, some level of accountability with respect to that.
Questions? So what I'm kind of hearing from Commissioner Cupid is Sweetwater Mission, using your example, has the food, but they don't have the manpower to get the food to where it needs to go. So is it truly?
I didn't necessarily, I do not want to go into detail about, I don't wanna go into too much detail, lest we miscolor.
Okay, yeah, let me, let me finish, because my question is, is it truly a lack of food or a lack of ways of getting it to those who are in need? And then let me, let me tag on to that, because I don't know what your grocery stores are like in your area, but I know in mine, and we've been going to three different stores between Krogers and Publix, there's a lot of things that are still not on the shelves. So then the next question is, is if the food providers have dried up, and where's the food gonna come from? Because we're not able to find food in our area. You know, our meat out in our area, in four of our grocery stores, is pretty much limited, gone. It's also interesting that, you know, if you do find it, it's, you are limited to one package at a purchase. However, if you come in with food stamps, and we know under the CARES Act for March and April, that they've issued double food stamps to those who qualify, they're not limited in quantities that they can purchase. So while you and I might be limited to one, if they've got six food stamps, they can get six times. But if it dries up and we can't get it, where are they gonna get it as well?
I cannot refute anything that you're sharing, except for, let us, that, all of that, let's take that into consideration, to figure out how to meet the need, because there's clearly need that's still there on top of that. And these are things that should be addressed to ensure that people are being able to get items that, that they need. But I think in the presentation about manpower, all of that was addressed in the presentation that the funding would go to getting food to people, so it's not just actually the food product itself, but the direct inputs into providing food to persons would be included. So it's my hope that that would be addressed. And again, this goes to partnerships, so there's some organizations, too, that might be limited, but as Sheri in her presentation provided, a lot of organizations are partnering with other organizations who may be able to do certain things. So again, I just don't want to be painting with a broad brush about one organization can't do or can't do, because we do not know the details of their partnership. And I'm just getting, I'm just getting a little concerned about, about that.
Commissioner Burrow.
Well, and plus, you have a lot of groups that are not 501(c)(3) and certified nonprofits that are, I mean, the community support has been phenomenal, but it's not enough. It's not, it's not meeting the need, because the need has grown so much because of the emergency situation, and people losing their jobs and out of work and that kind of thing, needing to support their families. And I, I, you know, I get it from what I've seen and heard and been a part of in the community. I know the need is definitely out there. And then when the eviction restrictions are lifted, you're gonna see another wave of people needing shelter and so forth. And then these groups that provide summer lunch, like the Y and MUST, that provide lunches for kids in the summer, that are, you know, free lunch during the year or whatever, they're, they're concerned now, because of the increase that they're seeing with COVID-19, they're concerned that, you know, the summer lunch program is gonna be a whole nother wave of increase from what it's been. So I think, I do think there's gotta be, I mean, if WFN is gonna be managing the distribution and all that, and we do need accountability from them of how these are being dispersed and, and all that. But you say that's coming with a agreement?
Yeah, it's a couple things. First of all, I appreciate your point about the equity, Commissioner Cupid. I think that's something we'll have to address, because like Commissioner Burrow was saying here, there are people that do this, you know, as a normal course of their mission, but they're not necessarily part of the CDBG process. So we have to include them, because they are, in fact, doing things. Like, for instance, the one that I worked at this weekend, and Sheri was there also, they get their food because they're a partnership with the Atlanta Food Bank. And there's lots of processes out there. So whatever we do, I think, I really liked your three points about the process, equity and accountability. I think that's a good structure to build on, that we can have the county attorney put together an MOU based on that, and have discussions here. We may have to have a special call meeting of the board, all right, to address this, because I don't think we're gonna be able to do this all by tomorrow. And that'll involve, what I still would like to hear tomorrow is, it's just to validate, one of the issues that Sheri brought up in her presentation is about the reserves. Your point's well made about the process, about they get the food, but what I'm hearing from a number of ministers is that they simply have, are reading into their reserves, both contingency and otherwise. And so what this CARES Act allows us to do is help those, those organizations that provide support for food insecurity and other things, is give us additional funding to this. So in other words, when I first put this out, like I said earlier, I didn't know about the $132 million that would include additional funding for this. So my million dollars, which I realize is gonna be a hard sell, because it's a million dollars asking it from the general fund, and I am sensitive to next year, Commissioner Campbell, I really am. But I can't ignore what's in front of me here about, the government is here to serve the people, and there is a need to address food insecurity, and it's growing every day. And I can't get into the particulars of how they're gonna get the food, but I have a pretty good idea of how that happens. But it doesn't matter, they can't get the food if they don't have the money to buy the food. So we have been given some support by the federal government, dropping $132 million under our lap. I would ask the board, that given that we didn't know about this $132 million, but it is there, and it clearly covers specific instances of helping out communities that are impacted by loss of employment and otherwise, that we might be able to do more than $1 million for both food and for shelters, okay? Just wanted you to think about that. I'm not asking for an answer right now. Please don't fall out of your chair, Commissioner Campbell, all right?
Well, and while I understand your, your thinking here, my long-term thinking is, is again, you put this money out there, people are gonna be dependent upon that resource being there for them, and then we take it away, again, because let's, let's all remember last July with, with the defunding of the nonprofits. You know, it, the money is going to go away, and it is going to dry up again. So the question is, is are we gonna get more people dependent on the government to, to take care of them? Or are we just going to be giving them a means to help them get back on their feet and get rolling again, yet with the expectation that you're gonna be, you know, taking care of yourselves again and not depending on the government long term?
Actually, nice segue, all right? And we did not rehearse this.
No, we didn't.
There's actually money here in the CARES program for grants to small businesses to reimburse the cost of business interruption caused by required closures.
Right, so are we gonna go through the CDBG for that as well?
No, I'm just saying, I, I'm just trying to have a conversation with the board. I don't have all the answers. All I know is, the government has given us a broad category of programs that we can support, and I just haven't had a, what would the board like to do with the funding of all these areas? And we're gonna have a broader conversation, not just about nonprofit programs, but also about government programs, that local government right now.
Well, okay, and so let's, let's segue again. So, so if we can use this $132 million to help out the small businesses, okay, so then those small businesses, which a lot of them already were paying their employees even though they got let off, I mean, a good portion of them were.
Right.
Okay, so now we're gonna give them money so that they can go back and give their employees, you know, lost wages or whatever. You know, then we're not gonna have the housing that we're gonna have to fund, et cetera, et cetera.
You've got great points, you really do. I mean, believe it or not, I share your sentiment, I do. But I also know that the, that the government, the federal government, because of input from the state and hopefully local government, has seen that these are truly, I hate to use this term, but it fits, it's unprecedented, all right? And, and the government has given us a significant amount of revenue to address a multitude of issues that they, that because of the way each government is organized, some governments are organized to how, take care of housing issues. We're not, okay? We depend on somebody else to do that. But they've given us the resources to do that, and they want us to help organizations that we have within our county to address these issues, and particularly the growing need that they see. That's all I'm saying.
Right, and even though this is federal money, it's still the taxpayers' money.
I get that point.
And, you know, I'm sure you read the same things or heard the same things I did, you know, the $1,200 that some people got is gonna cost us $13,000 to repay. So again, it becomes the question of what benefit is that $1,200 if it's gonna cost us $13,000 to repay?
And that goes to the accountability that Commissioner Cupid's talking about. We're gonna have to wrap this into something that makes it comfortable.
So why don't we pull this from the agenda, get an MOU in place that's going to put in those criteria, and then have the discussion once we have the MOU in place?
And that's what I said, and if that's the case, then I will have a special call meeting of the board, because we can't wait two more weeks, okay? We gotta get this thing moving. The need is there, I can assure you, all right? Because of what I'm hearing, and tomorrow, if you want, if we just left it here for, to have some of the people that are doing this other than Sheri, all right, members of the organization, like Ike Riker, Howard Kepka, there's a lot of people that are doing it, that can tell you, give this her comments, she's just one voice. But what they would say was, they would, they would give her voice more credibility, because they're the ones on the front lines doing this.
Right, but I also understand, we've got the Cobb County School District that's getting food shipped in every week, and they've got food left over, that they don't have a place to give it out to. So again, is, is it really about food, or is it just taking the resource that we do have and making sure it gets distributed? And to me, it's almost, it's, it's the distribution, because there's, there's many areas that have the food that don't have people coming to take it. Or I kinda chuckled, because on the phone call, one person was like, well, we don't like the meat that's being given. And I kinda was, I kinda chuckled, because I'm like going, just say, thank you, you've got food, you know?
Saturday, Sheri and I loaded 298 cars with food. 298 cars, okay? And that's just one space. And I'm sure these other pastors will tell you about other programs.
But you can't guarantee those 298 cars also weren't at the school picking up meals either.
I don't, I, I don't know. I, I hear where you're coming from, I just don't see things that way, all right? What I see is there's a need, and we've been And we've been tasked by the federal government to find some way to provide, to reallocate the resources they have given us. And that's what we're going to be doing here, not just with this program, but other programs too, involving the local government reimbursement and some other things. There's money in here for public health. We don't own public health, but they expect us to provide money for public health with this money that they've given us. So we're going to have this conversation many times in many different areas because the government has given me 132, given us $132 million and expects us to allocate it in a way that reflect, respond to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Right. And if you're going to go there, then that also enables us to reimburse Wellstar for all their expenses.
That's what I'm saying.
And the $132 million isn't going to cover what Wellstar expended the past month. So there goes your money.
We're going to have these conversations on a regular basis. You know, the money, the money, the money does no good sitting in our checking account. It needs to get out to the people to help them in their healthcare industry, food insecurity, sheltering. There's a multitude. This $132 million, we will probably use this up by June. The need is that great. That's all I'm saying. And I hear, I really hear what you're saying. I mean that in all sincerity. But I'm just coming from a different place. I can't sit here and wait to say, okay, I've got 350 starving people, now I got to do something. We have to get in front of this. That's all I'm saying.
We're behind the eight ball as it is, but, but, and then also we need to remember there's, you know, the Braves are also, Commissioner Ott just texted me because I didn't know this, but the Braves have also started distributing food. So again.
And Mercedes-Benz, and Atlanta United, they're all.
I would like to see some accountability start before we start just handing out funds, which is what Commissioner Cupid say, but then you're sitting here saying we're behind the eight ball. But I think this agenda item needs to be pulled until we get the MOU in place.
Chair and the board, I just want to make sure, I want to look, item 57 was amended? Does everyone have the amended item 57 that's in front of?
Was that the pink sheet or another sheet? I've lost track.
Pink sheet?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the pink sheet, we recognized that we can't have everything in place in order for the meeting, but we worked late on Friday to try to get together what, what would look like in order for us to be able to distribute the foods, get it out as quickly as you can, which has been the board's expression to us. And so working with WFN is the organization that we already use with CDBG. And so that, they already have the framework involved regarding checking on what needs to be to be able to get funds out. It's a lot quicker. We wouldn't be able to create a system in order to make sure what that would look like or what we're able to do. It creates the checks and balances that you wanted to. We don't have a particular agreement with them right now that might work with, we have one that might work with them, but we're reviewing and scrubbing that document because we already have it in place regarding our CDBG funds. And so what we, what, the way we drafted the, the agenda item was to allow us to, if the board elects to approve it, to either use the agreement we already have with them, or if another agreement needs to be done, that it be similar in form and substantially in a way that will allow us to be able to distribute these funds using WFN. So that, I just want to make sure the board had the updated agenda item that, and that addresses some, at least some of these issues the board is concerned about, and it'll allow you to be able to move forward.
I'm fine with pulling it. I think you need to get with Commissioner Cupid to address her equity issues, okay? I think that's something she's been very consistent and advocating, and I appreciate that. And in this case here, I, I support her, okay? There was other reasons before why I didn't go that direction, but it was for, it was for technical reasons, not philosophical reasons. But on this one here, I'm happy to have her engage in a conversation on that. And with the understanding that I will call this board back to a special session, all right? And we, and this is, this, this has to be, this, this agenda item is urgently needed to be, to be addressed by the board at the soonest possible moment, certainly not by, before the end of this week. Okay? So is that, is that something you could work with?
Sir, I don't know what the equity issues are particularly.
Well, I just want you to talk to Commissioner Cupid about that.
Okay. Well, what we don't want to do, obviously, there's a gratuity issue that's involved, and we start, the board cannot start selecting which organization it goes to and which ones it doesn't.
I hear you. I hear you. All right. But again, it's, it's a give and take of this board, and eventually we find the solution. So I'm willing to put this off for a day or two while we, we put together, when we put together a draft MOU that the board could look at, all right, based on conversations with the board members. Okay?
Who would the, I'm sorry, Chairman, I'll, I'll talk with you offline. I just want to know who the MOU would be with?
It would be with WFN.
Okay.
And we would provide them guidance as to what we want them to do, okay? And, and they've also told me that they don't have to meet the federal guidelines now because of the way this is written. This is separate than the CDBG process. So, and then I think the intent by some of the commissioners is that all those programs, all those, all those programs will be brought back to the board for approval before WFN would, would go ahead and, you know, before we'd allocate the money to DUFY and spend it on those programs. It's kind of like the CDBG. They, they tell us what the programs are in an agenda item, and we vote on it, okay? Same sort of thing here. We would get a list, the board would, would provide the guidance to WFN. They would come back with a list of programs they want us to support, and then we'd vote on it. Okay? That pretty straightforward? I know, I know. Just be patient here. But this is all new. We're trying to speed the process here where we're not structured to do that, but the need is there. And we have to find, we have to find a way to get together here and accept some things and give up some things in order to meet what I see as a increasing burden on community as we get through the summer here. And we, we're going to reopen the economy somewhat in some degree, but not to the extent where we're not going to relieve the food insecurity issues and sheltering issues that we have in the future. Okay? Those are going to be with us for the foreseeable future. We need to have something to help out if we can. And the government has given us the resources to do that. And I think that it's a responsibility, we should assume, to find a way to use these, these revenues, but in a responsible fashion, that's accountable, that we can go back and say that, yes, we did this, but here's how we did it. It's open and transparent, and everybody can understand why, how we do what we did. I mean, you agree with it all the time. At least you can't say that this wasn't just, you know, subjectively arrived at. Okay? Are you good on that? Is that fine for everybody?
Is there any way we could have something before the 1:30 meeting and leave it on the agenda?
I don't, I don't think so. I don't think Bill could put something together that, that quickly. All right. What we'll do is we'll leave it there for right now, but I'll let Commissioner Cupid talk to Bill, Mr. Rowling, about this, and then we'll come back to it. But I'm, I'm pretty confident that we'll need to do something about this later in the week.
I mean, my understanding of this agenda item, it was to get a pulse of where
Yes, right. Discussion.
Understanding that there would still have to be a procedural framework put in place.
Correct.
And I know that WFN has one, but I will look at us broadening it. As Commissioner Burrow had pointed out, there are organizations that could be churches or other organizations that are engaged in this, who could utilize resource but may not necessarily meet the CDBG criteria that WFN is used to applying, as Sherry also pointed out in her presentation, just the bar for some organizations to be able to get some other federal funding. So I mean, I think we should all look at it and, and all be accountable for putting in a framework in place. I don't want that onus just to be on me. I'm just looking at it through an equity lens, particularly with the disparate need that's in District Four.
Okay. Thank you, Sherry. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Big step. Thank you. I appreciate your time. Okay.
Are you saying we will have a special call meeting for this one item?
Yes. I don't see the way you're.
Okay, well, Kimberly, get WebEx ready, especially if it's this week.
Okay, I'm going to start with you. Let's go to rest of the regular DOT for, for Commissioner Burrow. Items 58 through 69.
Okay, yeah, I have, I have a question about 61.
Yes, ma'am.
Is, did you find out anything about Kennesaw, City of Kennesaw's share? Or is this 21,000 all on us?
No, it'll, it'll be split per the CFA. Yes, ma'am.
But what amount? We don't know.
I think it's 80, 80, 20. I'll have to double check the share on that. This one's not the 50/50. I think this one's at 80/20, but I'll double, I'll double check that.
Okay, is most of the project in our, in the unincorporated? Because it's their sploshed item too. It's a joint project.
Yes, ma'am. So we have a, we have, we have it split accordingly. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, if you could get me if it's for sure 80, 20. Kelly, you may want to weigh in on this since it's both our districts too. 61, Cherokee Street Joint Project with Kennesaw.
I was okay with it.
Okay, I just want to know what their, what they're contributing and what we're, was the whole project 80/20 us?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so they're.
But I'll verify that split.
The increase amount would be comparable to that.
Yes, ma'am. But I'll verify that split.
Okay. If that's the case, then I'm good with it too, if that's what it has to be.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
I just didn't know what the amount was. Okay, and then, let me see. I, I had a question on 68, but that got answered on the unforeseen water project costs.
Yes, ma'am.
Of why the 54, 54 million went out, I mean, 54,000.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you for responding. That's all I had on those.
Yes, thank you. I just always have consternation when I see 2005 splosh show up in 2020. I just.
So this is the, so we, and Commissioner Gabriel had asked this question also. This is, there are two projects in design right now. And one is the Bob Kellon Trail, which is being funded by Georgia DOT and Cumberland CID. And then the second one is this one, and it was part of the Bells Ferry Road Corridor. We had two projects that come out of that. One was the intersection of Piedmont at Bells Ferry. And then the second one is the last project that is in, has been, that was identified or identified as a second, is a line, as a project in that Bells Ferry corridor. So that will hopefully close this project out for Bells Ferry once this is complete.
Okay.
And we're, we're updating our sploshed information for the Citizens Oversight Committee, so I can send you all an update on where we're at in '05 splosh.
Yes, that would be wonderful.
That way, every time we put that together, we can send that out to you all also.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, Commissioner Cupid, that was my question, is how much money was remaining in the 2005 splosh?
Yes, ma'am.
For this?
I think it.
It's my understanding that there were multiple projects of the '05 splosh that weren't completed.
Right. And this was one of those, this was a deferred project. And then once it, we, we were allowed, once projects were reallocated or come back, Bells Ferry corridor was, was scaled down to just a couple of intersections. So this will take care of that, that project. But I'll, I'll get that out today on the '05.
That would be great, because I, I mean, if we had a number of them done, then I wonder how do we choose some over others?
Right.
What, what did that entail?